Start the recording. Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the Grace Trinity Bible Study. We're continuing our study on the Book of Isaiah from a lady named Sandra L. Richter's book from the Epic of Eden series called Isaiah. And so we're on session five and there are five more sessions after today. So there will be, next week, there will be less ahead than what we have behind us. So today, there will be the same. But uh, I'm enjoying it. I hope you folks are and it's definitely a little more in-depth perhaps than some of the things that we've done. But she is certainly, if you're doing your reading and keeping up with your assignments, you are spending time in the Bible and probably in sections that we don't visit quite as much as some other sections. And I really am enjoying the background that she's providing on, you know, it's not just reading what happened to Isaiah and what he did, but helping us understand the whys and what was going on in the broader region that was causing everything to happen. So Pastor Jeanne from Grace is on vacation this week and today she should be traveling to Pigeon Forge. She, she and Sandy went to Wisconsin to see Sandy's sister on Monday and they came home on Tuesday and today they're going to Pigeon Forge. They're going to come home and through Evansville to see her mom on Saturday. And then I don't know when they're coming back into, but they won't be at church on Sunday. So.
And we have special speaker.
So, so that's what's going on as far as that goes. And so does anybody have anything they'd like to say about our reading before we get started? If not, we can, if you have questions, we can talk about them as we go along. There won't be another written test and when I, when I taught Nuclear Power School in the Navy, one of the things that we did was we called them horses and they kind of provided you with answers. And so like if you were having the review session before an exam, you might say, you know, stomp your foot on the ground like this is a horse. This is something that you might see again in the next day or two. And so I would tell you that the video today is a great horse for this assignment that I'm going to pass out. I mean, a great one. Sometimes it's like, it's like you're filling in a sentence that she said.
Oh, all right.
All right. So.
You know, this would be a lot, a little less complicated, except for all the names of every.
I cannot, I can't pronounce those.
It's so confusing. Like you're trying to think of, because unfamiliar titles or names, and then you're trying to associate them with their position or where they live.
You don't really understand the word for their position either. So like the Suzerain, you know, like say King instead, but.
Now are we going to get rated on this?
Yes, of course. You can exchange papers after. And so if you don't know an answer, just leave it blank and then you can fill it in for the other person.
That'd be a lot.
But anyway, well, before we get started, let's go ahead and let's see, I started the recording. Okay. Let's go ahead and have prayer and then we'll get going. Would anyone else like to open us in prayer? Or if not, I will.
Thank you for your protection today, Father. And thank you for the beauty of the various colors in the sky. Thank you for your goodness to us. Thank you for our time together that we can look into your word, learn about Isaiah, and learn from his teachings. Guide us today and be with John as well.
Thank you. So our lesson today starts on week, well, that's yeah, week five, starts on page 49. And it's the life and times of Isaiah the prophet, part two, and the Assyrian Empire. And you know, sometimes we run across the Assyrians when we're reading scripture. We sometimes read it, come across the Babylonians and the Babylonians are going to follow after the Assyrians and they're, they're going to be the ones that really are a problem with Nebuchadnezzar to the southern kingdom when the, and caused the southern kingdom to fall. But I was thinking about, you know, since we started the book, we started with Israel wanting a king. And so we found Samuel anointed Saul as king because the people wanted a king. Everybody else had a king and the people wanted a king. All their neighbors had kings. And so then we had Saul as king and Saul failed. And so God didn't remove him from the throne directly. But events unfolded so that someone who used to play the harp for him was anointed by Samuel as king. And talk, gonna talk a little bit about that today, about the, the staff of Jesse or the rod of Jesse. And so then you have David and David started out in two Samuel seven, I think, where it says that he was a man after God's own heart and it was certainly a favorite of God. And we saw that play out a little bit last week because David's son was not removed directly, but he lost almost everything, all of the kingdom that his father had established. And so then you go on after David was Solomon, the one very wise. And last week we read, we read about Solomon's son. Solomon had his own failures and became an oppressor of the northern people so that he would have slaves to build his temple and, and build Jerusalem and became more interested in wealth and women than he was in following God. And so his son, I think his son was Jeroboam and his son was given an opportunity to roll back some of the things that Solomon was doing. And his advisors promised him that if, if he would do that, if we would be more like the king that God had called them to be, that God wanted the kings of Israel to be, he was promised that they would follow him forever. And no, good enough for my dad. I'm just going to keep doing his policies and probably do it even worse. And so we saw what happened to them. He lost everything except the southern kingdom, the 10 tribes and it seems like bad things after bad things after bad things. And we're, we're talking about less than 200 years. So it's kind of a, an interesting time and lots going on. And yet the one thing that's true throughout is God is there. God's sending them prophets. God still cares. God didn't just wash his hands of it. He just, but boy, they're a mess. So, all right. So on page 49, it says, a word from the author. This is talking about Tillgath Pleser, the third. Now that is such a nice name. You can understand why you would want to have three of them. Tillgath Pleser, the Neo Assyrian Empire was birthed in 745 BCE when Tiglath, I guess, not Tillgath. Tiglath Pleser, the third, took the throne in Nineveh. His goal to conquer the world. I guess his goals go, that's.
That's pretty good.
Pretty massive.
Yeah. Maybe they call them one, two and three.
Well, what one and two do?
They had lesser goals.
So if you go down to the inset part there, the result of Till, Tillgath Pleser's standing army was the constant military activity throughout his reign and overflowing coffers at home. So he was using the army to make money. And she's going to talk about that in the video today about why they wanted that area that we might call Palestine. That all the trade routes between Africa and into Europe and into Asia passed through that little bit of land there between the Red Sea and the Mediterranean. So it was a great conduit for wealth. And so for those in the path of expansion who chose to cooperate with the crown, a vassal relationship with the Assyria, with Assyria was initiated. A vassal relationship. You know, you will still call you probably by your name, but we're going to appoint our king and we're going to tax you or we're going to appoint your king and we're going to tax you and you will honor me. For those less cooperative, the local leader was stripped of his office, often executed and replaced with a man of the emperor's choosing. For those least cooperative, local government was obliterated and Assyrian governor was established and the territory absorbed, absorbed into the empire as a province. And the final stage saw exile. And so that's what's going to happen to the northern kingdom in 722 B.C. Is their leaders revolted against, they tried to band together with somebody from Syria. And so they ended up being absorbed completely into Assyria. The people were by and large exiled. There might've been a few left behind, but they would resettle that area with people who are loyal to Assyria when they kicked the local people out. And let's see, it said, a strategy, this strategy is designed to strip the conquered nation of its will to rebel by relocating the bulk of its population elsewhere. In this fashion, national identity was lost, dissident factions dissolved, and the new heterogeneous population in both the old and new territories were left to thrive as their only objective and Assyria as their only lord. And of course, who was Israel's one true king? Jehovah. Jehovah was their one true king. And if Israel had kept that in mind and kept their faith and trust in the one true king, they wouldn't have had these things going on. So God either orchestrates these things to happen or he allows them to happen to punish people, even his own, when they are unfaithful. And so we're going to see that happen again today with what happens with Ahaz, but we'll, we can go on from here right now. And you know, it talks about in Isaiah seven, verse one, in the days of Ahaz, the son of Jotham, son of Uzziah, king of Judah. And so that gives us a marker as to when Isaiah's ministry started. So we know when Isaiah started, ministry started and she's going to show you this little bookie math again, but down here, let's see, down here, right about where my two fingers are pointing is where Isaiah's reign is. It starts about 715, maybe a little, well, 735 right after Uzziah, Isaiah for Ahaz, Hezekiah, Manasseh. And so Isaiah, that's when his ministry starts and that helps us to understand when this is going on. So about 750 years or so before Christ. And then she's got this Book of Isaiah chart in there. We've looked at it before and it kind of talks about the two different Isaias, the former things and the latter things. And we're going to talk it in lesson two today. We had a chance to identify whether some things were former things or latter things. And so we'll look at that when we look at that assignment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or discuss at this point?
Where did the people go?
When they were exiled? Well, they were forced marched into a different region of the territory, probably.
They still saying that that's.
Yes, but probably in an area where other people had been marched out of. So no one would have a geographic identity and they would mix them together. So you know, you wouldn't trust your neighbor. And if you don't trust your neighbor, you're not going to try to start a rebellion because you don't know that you can trust them. So and your neighbor's probably just as likely to turn you in as.
Yeah.
So, all right. Well, if there aren't any other questions, we'll go ahead and see if we can start our video again.
If I have an extra pen.
Yeah.
I'm always switching purses.
Sometimes I carry two, sometimes I don't.
In our last session, we started taking the backdrop to the book and then we talked about the divided kingdom as an important setting for the Oracle of Isaiah. Now we have to talk about the other part of the backdrop that is.
Stop it. Turn captions on.
Oh, I found a pen. Return this to me.
I hope.
God, I'm like, Lord.
That's one with the answers. We wish.
With the what?
Answers.
Oh, that'd be nice.
In our last session, we started taking the backdrop to the book and then we talked about the divided kingdom as an important setting for the Oracle of Isaiah. Now we have to talk about the other part of the backdrop that is essential to your understanding of the book. And that is the Neo Assyrian Empire, which rises up out of the ashes of the Old Mesopotamian Empire in 745 B.C. and conquers the world. Now, who are the Assyrians? Well, there is a quotation that I love in describing this particular empire. It comes from a story named Donner and it goes like this. The Assyrians instituted a level of destruction that disallowed rebirth. This was their ambition. This was their strategy. This is who they were to so designate their opponents that no one would ever think of rebellion again. On the screen, you're looking at an image of an Assyrian king right now. And as you look at him, the iconography of the way he presented is actually very important to his story. He's being presented as taller than his peers and his strong right arm is featured in the drawing. And the reason for that strong right arm is to communicate to the world that his perfect masculinity is a picture of his perfect leadership. All right. So who are the Assyrians? Well, they rise again in 745 B.C. under a character named Tiglath Pleser, the third. And they decide that the best way to conquer and control the world is to terrorize their opponents to create a level of economic oppression that leaves their opponents unable to rebel in the future. And if they cannot control them in that fashion, then should take whole populations and exile them to the far reaches of that empire, thereby breaking any will of national rebellion in the future. The Assyrians were the first true empires in the world and they made later empires like the Romans and the Greeks. It was like a bunch of gold gall. So let's get up close and personal with the Assyrians. I need to use the image of the board to describe them. Resistance is futile. We shall be assimilated. So nobody follows Star Trek anymore. The good news is I don't need Star Trek anymore because all over YouTube I have a new set of images and a new character. You are looking at the new Assyrian Empire of the modern world, the fourth of ISIS. They have the same strategies. They will so terrorize their opponents that no one will ever dream of rebellion again. They too will present images of themselves decapitating their foes, torturing their prisoners of war in order to communicate to the world, don't mess with us. This is who we are and this is who we want to be known as. The Neo Assyrian Empire comes to be a critical backdrop to the Book of Isaiah. Let's go back to timeline for just a minute. This timeline that you come to Noah and the flood. We know Isaiah's tenure and we realize that his ministry launches under Uzziah and stretches through Manasseh. While in this same time period of the divided monarchy, there are some smaller print events in the timeline. The first one is the Siro Ephraimite Wars that runs from 734 to 732 B.C. The second is the collapse of the northern kingdom in 722 B.C. And the third is something called Tanakus Campaign in 701 B.C. I'll leave it to you to guess what military machine is behind these three critical military events. An answer, of course, is the Neo Assyrian Empire. The resistance is futile. You shall be assimilated. Instituting a level of destruction that disallows rebirth. We cannot understand Isaiah's words without interacting with these three military.
That was the answer to the first question.
What was that?
An empire that instituted a level of destruction that disallowed rebirth.
Okay, I got reversed. I hadn't read on you.
And anymore than we could understand our own world, if we didn't know what nine 11 meant or why Persia Gulf, you know, a word that strikes terror in the ears of veterans from California to Baltimore. So we need to understand these events. We need to understand this empire. Let's put the Neo Assyrian Empire into real space. We put them into real time. Let's take a look at a map. The situation is the Assyrians lived over to the east in the Mesopotamian Valley and for centuries, literally, they have understood the Euphrates River as their natural traditional boundary. And all those that came fast past that river.
There were two more answers.
Yeah. You have to write really fast.
The Assyrians in real space, Mesopotamian Valley for the first one. And they understood the Euphrates River to be their natural boundary. Under the Assyrians and.
Oh, I know I'm not spelling it right. Now start over. Give me the answer.
Stomp, stomp, stomp.
Well, the first question, Assyrians live in the Mesopotamian Valley.
How do you spell that? Oh, just write down what you think is.
It's with mess. Missing.
Mesopotamian.
People pundits.
People pundits.
Mess, messy people pundits.
And then the second one is the Euphrates River. And so if you look up there on this drawing that she's got or the map that she's got up there, it's the upper right-hand corner and she has circled Mesopotamia, or excuse me, Euphrates River. And so that area is part of the fertile crescent because of those two rivers kept the valleys and the area green and growing. And so then Israel, the northern kingdom is down here and the southern kingdom is south of the northern kingdom.
Part of who?
Part of the Garden of Eden.
Yeah.
The area.
I was saying Iraq.
Yeah. Right. Cause Iraq is in this area now. Both of those rivers are in Iraq.
They have never ever set up shop in the northern or southern kingdom's territory. But in 745 B.C., our nemesis, Tiglath Pleser, the third, takes an empire that had been yesterday's news and turns it into this horrific military machine. And he decides that the Euphrates River is not, is no longer a reasonable boundary and he begins to campaign to the west. Why is he campaigning to the west? Because there are trade routes and port cities along the coast of the Mediterranean that control the economy of the ancient world. And if Tiglath Pleser is.
All right. So the last question there, Till Tiglath Pleser, third's goals in leading military campaigns beyond the natural boundary of the Euphrates River was to control the trade routes and port cities. In order to do that, he needed to control the economy.
World, he needs to control these trade routes and these port cities. So as he stretches to the west, you can see that the northern and southern kingdoms stand in the way of his expansion. The northern kingdom will be the first to feel his fury, but the southern kingdom won't be free of impact either. So looking at Isaiah's tenure, we see that he begins preaching in the days of King Uzziah, in the year that King Uzziah dies, a scholar named Christopher Seitz has actually identified this particular phrase as a most storied graphic reference to the rise of the Neo Assyrian Empire. We see that he is therefore, Isaiah, subject to the development and the expansion of this particular empire. The empire launches in 745 B.C. under Tiglath Pleser, the third. When he decides that the perceived western border of his empire, the Euphrates River, isn't enough. And he began campaigning down into the land of Canaan. Let's take a look at this in real space. At the map, you're seeing the Euphrates River, which is indeed this perceived western border. Now Assyria for hundreds of years had campaigned past the Euphrates, but they never set up shop. Tiglath Pleser, the third, says, that's not good enough for me. He decides that he is going to campaign and seize and control. Independent nations are now going to become provinces. Provinces are going to become vassal states. All of this territory is going to be assimilated into the Assyrian Empire in large part because this territory also holds something critically important to our emperor. And that is the trade route of the ancient Near East. The highways that run up and down the coast of Canaan and the major port cities along the coast as well. If Tiglath Pleser can control these highways and these ports, he has now controlled the economy of the Levant. And that means every time any ship pulls in or out of port or any caravan passes out of the desert onto a highway, ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching. And that's what Tiglath Pleser did happen. Now you can see by this map that the northern kingdom and the southern kingdom stand in the way of Tiglath Pleser's expansion. And so they're going to get hit again and again and again. The first hit is our first event that we are interested in, in this section of Isaiah. And that is the Siro Ephraimite Wars, 734 to 732 B.C. Where do those fall in the Book of Isaiah? Well, turn with me to chapter seven, because chapter seven, verse 12, tells the story of this. tells the story of the Syro-Ephraimite Wars in the background and King Ahaz the faithless in the foreground. King Ahaz the faithless is not a title that either of you, you or I would want, but this is the title that he earns based on these interactions. So again, we're seven thirty-four, what's the crisis at hand? Well, according to the text itself, there are several major places. One is Pekka, the king of the Northern Kingdom.
Answers Israel.
Yep, the Northern Kingdom, Israel. Last week, if you remember, she said that the author, Isaiah uses Israel to describe the Northern Kingdom, but also the entire nation, Northern and Southern Kingdom combined. So it's a little bit challenging sometimes. But in this case, Pekka is the king of the Northern Kingdom, Israel. Topeka is king of Israel and Rezun is king of Aram, Damascus. So that's Aramia. And where the language Aramaic comes from, that Jesus spoke. And then Damascus would be Syria, so that's where the Syria comes from. Another name for the Northern Kingdom is Ephraim, after one of the tribes. So when she talks about the Syro-Ephraimite Wars, that's the wars where Syria, which is Aram, Damascus, and the Northern Kingdom, that's sometimes referred to as Ephramites. That's where those, that name comes from for those wars. It's when Syria and the Northern Kingdom banded together to try to control their destiny. And then you have Ahaz, who is the king of Judah. And Tabel, or Tabel, or however you want to say it, is in the royal line of Judah. And that's who, if the Northern Kingdom and Syria are successful in taking over Judea, the Southern Kingdom, Tabel is who they want to put on the throne in Jerusalem, the Southern Kingdom, to be their vassal king. So in that next question, why is the north attacking the south? They want to take Ahaz off the throne and place Tabel on it. I don't know why they can't just be Joe and Mike.
It'd be easier.
Nice three-letter words instead of long double hyphenated.
Rezun, the king of John, Damascus. A third is Ahaz the faithless, king of Judah. And there's another fellow in here as well, a gentleman, gentleman, I don't know, named Tabel or Tabel. And he is of the royal line of Judah. But he is being tagged by our other characters as a potential usurper to Ahaz's throne. So this is how the text reads in chapter seven. Now it came about in the days of Ahaz, the son of Jehovah, the son of Uzziah, king of Judah, that Rezun, the king of Aram, and Pekka, the son of Ramalia, the king of Israel, went up to Jerusalem to wage war against it. So all of her characters are on the same, right? And these characters are Israel and Aram the mass, the two joint forces to fight against Judah. Now the Northern Kingdom and the Southern Kingdom have not always gotten along, not by any stretch of the imagination. But the idea that the north would actually attack the south, okay, this is unprecedented, this is new. And why are they attacking the south? Well, they're attacking the south because they want to actually pull Ahaz off his throne and put Tabel on it. Let me keep reading. Verse two, when he reported to the house of David, saying, the Arameans have camped in Ephraim. His heart and the hearts of his people shook as trees of the bush shake with the wind. Well, what's that about? Well, Aram Damascus is Aram, or the Arameans who have passed it, and Ephraim is the Northern Kingdom. So what has taken place is that Rezun and Pekka have actually marched on Jerusalem. And Ahaz is scared stupid, as he should be. Now, as we move forward with this story, we're going to be introduced to a couple of other characters. And those characters include Isaiah, Ahaz, and Emmanuel. Because in verse three of chapter seven, the Lord speaks to Isaiah and he says, go out now and meet Ahaz. Go out now and meet Ahaz. The first clue there is that Isaiah has not been invited into this conversation. He should have been. But Yahweh, the true king of Israel, is sending his messenger, the prophet, to go in first himself in the conversation. So what's the backdrop here? Well, we talked a lot about the Assyrians and they, of course, are behind this particular crisis. They're on the move again. And being on the move again, the northern states, so Israel, Aram, Damascus, have decided that if they allied together, they can potentially resist the Assyrians and.
So Assyrians on the move on the second page, about halfway down, Israel, the Northern Kingdom, and Aram, Damascus want to resist the Assyrians.
And they think this is going to work. Now, a hundred years before, it might have worked, but it's not going to work now. And so Ahaz is king down in the Southern Kingdom, he's ruling from Jerusalem. And he is being called upon by the Northern Kingdom and Aram Damascus, hey, join forces with us. Let's present an allied front if we all.
And so the next question, Israel and Aram Damascus want Judah to join them against the Assyrians. So that's the second question under Assyrians on the move. Israel, and then in parentheses, the Northern Kingdoms and Aram Damascus want Judah to join them against the Assyrians.
Stand together, we can send the Assyrian help. Now, smart or stupid, Ahaz looks at this scenario and says, ah, not me, Jack. There's no way you're going to win this one. And I'm not joining forces, Tabel against Assyria, thanks, call somebody else. Well, the Northern Kingdom and Aram Damascus are not willing to be told no. So what happens is the Aram and the capital city of the Northern Kingdom, under their king, actually march on Jerusalem. And in marching on Jerusalem, Jerusalem is now in double jeopardy, right? They were afraid of the Assyrians, but now they actually have a tiny army on their doorstep. What in the world is Ahaz going to do? Well, what Ahaz should do is he should turn to the prophet. And he should ask Isaiah, hey, Isaiah, what should I do? How should I deal with this?
So the third question there, Ahaz says no. So Israel and Aram Damascus march on Jerusalem. And then the first question below, what should Ahaz do? He should call upon the prophet.
Prophet.
Yep, or Isaiah, he should call, well, you wouldn't say call upon the prophet. Well, you might, call upon the prophet. I also think the call upon the Lord
Yeah.
through his prophet would be an acceptable answer. So you got Isaiah, who's the mouthpiece of God there that's been talking to them. And I don't need him, I'll just think of my own plan.
But he doesn't. Instead, our chief, King Ahaz, the faithless one, comes up with his own plan. And it's not a plan that neither of us are going to love. Let's move in.
Instead, he comes up with his own plan for the second question under what should Ahaz do?
The scenario, Isaiah has been called and he's been instructed to go and speak to the king. So he encounters the king on a highway, on the way to the Polors field. And he says, hey, Ahaz, I've got a message from the real king of Israel. I've got a message from Yahweh. I've got a message from your sovereign lord, he wants to speak to you. And Ahaz says, you know, I'm really busy here, Isaiah thinks a lot, but, but, but I've got a plan. And Isaiah says, busy or not, you stop where you're, where you're standing and you're going to hear the word of Yahweh. And so we launch in verse four of the same chapter. And Isaiah says, Ahaz, be careful, keep calm, don't be afraid. Don't lose heart because of these two smoldering stoves of firewood, because of the fierce anger of Rezun and Aram and of the son of Ramalia. Aram and Ephraim, Ramalia's son, they plotted your ruin, saying, let us invade Judah and tear it apart and put Tabel as king over this, over it. But Yahweh, your sovereign lord, says, it will not take place, it will not happen. For the head of Aram is Damascus, and the head of Damascus is only Rezun. Within sixty-five years, Ephraim is going to be too shattered to do anything. The head of Ephraim is Samaria. If you will believe, then you will stand. But if you do not stand firm in your faith, then you will not stand at all. And Ahaz says, really interesting, but I'm really busy. And Isaiah says, ask for the word of the sign, Ahaz, he'll prove it to you.
So Isaiah tells Ahaz to ask for a.
Sign. A sign.
A sign. That's what the Pharisees were always asking Jesus for, one more sign and then we'll believe.
And one more, one more.
One more and one more, and it was never enough. And so the sign is the child named.
Jesus, Yahweh, no, Jesus.
No, well, no, not, not yet. Up there in where there's a square block, it says Isaiah seven, three to sixteen.
Thinking Emmanuel.
Yeah, that third name there, Emmanuel. That's the sign that God promises through Isaiah to Ahaz as his sign. And what would we say Emmanuel means? Kind of a big sign.
And Ahaz says, I told you, talk to the hand, I'm in the air. And Isaiah says, you won't listen, I'll speak anyway. This is the sign. Therefore, the Lord himself will offer you this. Behold, a virgin will be with child and will give birth to a child. And she will call his name Emmanuel. He will eat curds and honey when he knows enough to reject the wrong and choose the right. But before the boy knows enough to reject the wrong and choose the right, the land of the two kings whom you dread will be laid waste. Now, what is the content of that message? A lot of us have heard that passage a thousand times, Christmas cards, Christmas liturgies, all that sort of thing. What does it mean in its original context? Well, really, this message is not about the child, nor is the message even about the young woman who would give birth to the child. The message is about the message that the boy's name is bringing and his age. Do you hear this? Before the boy knows enough to reject the wrong and choose the right, the land of these two kings that you're afraid of is going to be gone.
So if you go down there, Isaiah tells Ahaz to ask for a sign. The sign is the child named Emmanuel. The message is not about child war or the king or child. The message is about the message the boy's name is bringing and the boy's age. Because the age is a marker, when he's, before he's even old enough to know right from wrong, these two that you're worried about are going to be dust in the wind. You don't need to worry about them. Then, of course, you know the next one, Ahaz rejects, ignores.
Is the age when a child knows enough to reject the wrong and choose the right? Well, the elementary pedagogue would tell us that that age is somewhere between ten and twelve. That's when a child obtains the ability of abstract thought and can actually say, no, no, this is right and that is wrong and I'm choosing right. In other words, what Isaiah is saying to Ahaz is very young woman who is giving birth right now, no, right now. And that child that she's giving birth, when he is ten, twelve years old, all this crisis is going to be gone, it's going to evaporate. It'll, it'll be history. And if you will trust Yahweh, he'll teach you through you, he will. And Ahaz says, talk to him. And what we learn in this passage is that Ahaz actually rejects the word of the prophet and instead institutes his own plan. What's his own plan? This is a great one. He's going to ask Assyria to defend him, Assyria.
It is a good plan. You get your enemy that's going to come and invade you, and instead of invading you, they protect you.
Called appeasement.
There you go, appeasement. And you saw a lot of that in the days, in the months leading up to World War Two. You know, the offering Hitler to Siedetland and offering him Czechoslovakia to keep him from doing other, other things. So Ahaz rejects the word of the prophet and Ahaz has a plan. He voluntarily gave the kingdom of God away to the Assyrians.
Resistance is futile, you shall be assimilated. Is it? Yeah. Assyria, the titans of the ancient world. And so what Ahaz does is he bonds firmly, surrenders the kingdom of God to the enemy of his earth. He clearly is ready to be adhered to. He willingly becomes a vassal. And willingly become a vassal. He not only messes up his own brain, but he destroys the security of the kingdom of God. This is why we call him the faithless. Now let's circle back to this prophecy, because the prophecy again is about a child who's being born right this moment. And by the time he reaches ten years old, Judah is going to be delivered from this crisis. What is his name? Well, the name that is given is the message that is given. The name is Emmanuel, the message is God is with us. How does that name work? Well, I threw some Hebrew up on the board for you, you can consider this as first lesson in Hebrew language. And the deal is that the word im is actually a preposition, it means with. And the word nu, that's in the mix, the mix means, it means up. It's the first common plural pronuncial suffix in Hebrew. So iman nu is with us. With us is what? With us is ale, God. This is the child's name, and this is the message that Isaiah is trying to bring to Ahaz. If you will trust in your sovereign lord, he's with you, he'll deliver you, he'll take care of you. And instead, Ahaz says, I have a better plan. And the better plan, of course, that we've seen, is that he will surrender Israel to the Assyrians. Have you ever been in a place in your life where the anxiety of a crisis has just easily overwhelmed you? Where darkness is everywhere, you can't even see past this problem. Every time you let your brain rest for even a second, a script is running, running, running. How am I going to fix this? Okay, that's where Ahaz is. And he's got a good reason to be there. The Neo-Serian. The new Assyrians are shaken scared. But the prophet comes to him and says, Emmanuel, will you trust or won't you? The right decision obviously is trust in Yahweh. He'll deliver you. And Ahas, of course, makes the wrong decision. Now, what about the virgin? Well, the virgin, of course, is very important in this passage. A virgin will be the child. And we're very interested in this passage because it reoccurs in Matthew, right? In the indications of who Jesus will be. And in, depending on how much reading you've done or what you've been exposed to, there's debate over whether or not this girl is actually a virgin. Right in the Hebrew original, the word is a Hebrew word called alma, which just means a young woman of marriageable age. Now, in their culture, that means she's a virgin, but it doesn't specifically say virgin. Well, when the, the Jewish translators, the Greek translators, got hold of that same passage two hundred and fifty years before Jesus was born, they picked up that passage, translated it to Greek, and they used the word Parthenon for that term. And that does specifically absolutely mean virgin. You've heard of the Parthenon, the temple to Athena, the eternal virgin? Okay, so then the later translators picked it up in about two hundred and fifty A.D. And some of them translated it back into young woman again, nianis in Greek, which typically should mean a virgin. So what happens when Matthew picks up this passage in chapter one of his Gospel? Well, he chooses the word Parthenon when he translates this passage. Because he has more than one choice. Is this a mistake? Is he tweaking the text? No, he's actually making a translation decision. Because now he knows the story. Yes, it was a virgin who would have a child. And his name would be Emmanuel. And you know what? If the people of God would have enough confidence to place their reliance in God's plan, this crazy new plan of a Messiah born of a virgin in the middle of liver-torn Judah oppressed and controlled by the Roman Empire, God would save them. But if they instead, like the Sanhedrin and the Pharisees and the Sadducees, were more afraid of Rome than they were of their gods, and they decided to throw in their lot with the Romans, then God won't save them. This is why Matthew pulls this passage. He's essentially pulling a handle on a bucket. He's pulling one little passage, hoping that you, the reader, will know the whole narrative that goes with it. And he is asking his audience, have confidence, have confidence in your God. He's got a plan. It might sound a little crazy to you, but it'll work. Okay, so as we come back to Isaiah seven fourteen, what is the best translation of this very documented and debated passage? Well, you could go with the NAF that says, therefore, the Lord himself will give you a sign. Behold, a virgin will be the child and bear a son, and she will call his name Emmanuel. Or you could go with the NIB, therefore, the Lord himself will give you a sign. The virgin will be the child and will give birth to a son and will call him Emmanuel. Or you could even go with Richter's translation. At this moment, this very moment, a young woman is pregnant and she is giving birth to a son. And either you or she is going to call his name Emmanuel. And before that boy knows enough to reject the wrong and choose the right, the land of the two kings you dread will be laid waste. The point, if Ahas will trust in his true sovereign, he will be delivered in ten to twelve years. But if he follows.
So on the last page, it says the virgin, under the virgin section there toward the top, Hebrew word alma, which may be, which may be mean. Little typing issue there. A young woman of marriageable age, perhaps? And then the second question, a young woman until the birth of her child, first child. And then Greek trans, well, then down in Matthew one eighteen, if the people would follow God's plan, God would save them. But if they were more afraid of Rome than their God, then God won't save them.
If, but if they were more what?
If the people would follow God's plan, God would save them. But if they were more afraid of Rome than their God, then God won't save them. And then the point, the point here is if, if Ahas will trust his true sovereign, he will be delivered in ten to twelve years. If he follows his own plan, only God can help him.
Okay, what's that last one? His own plan, God won't save him.
His own plan, God help him.
God help him.
His own plan, God help him. And fortunately, Ahas chooses to turn to Assyria with his own plan. And during the Syro-Ephraimite war, Assyria does tremendous damage in the northern and even the southern kingdoms. Tens of thousands are dragged off as a south. Thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty captive, according to Higglath Pelaita the Third, are dragged out of the lower Galilee. Sarang the Second claims twenty-seven thousand. So as you look at this image of the Assyrians, by the Assyrians, faking their captive on bayonets live so that their opponents can watch their loved ones die, Higglath Pelaita the Third claims about this war that I impaled alive his chief ministers and I made his country beholden. He claims that he died the river red with the blood that he spilled in his campaign against the northern kingdom. He claims that he took out Ahas's people and he took out the northern kingdom's people because he couldn't. And in the midst of chapters seven through twelve, this portion of Isaiah that sets up King Ahas to us as a model of the faithless one, we hear of the agony of God's people because their leaders have failed them. But in these same chapters, we hear over and over again about a child. A child who would be born. A child who would come and take the throne of his father David. A child who would kill his people and turn them back. And Isaiah is actually speaking to that northern kingdom that's wiped out in these wars. And what does he say? The people who walk in darkness will see a great light. Those who live in the dark land, the light will shine upon them. Her child will be born to us, a son will be given. And the government will rest on his shoulders and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor, Eternal Father, Mighty God, Prince of Peace. But there will be no end to the increase of his government or peace on the throne of David over his kingdom to establish it and uphold it with justice and righteousness from then on and evermore. And it is Yahweh of host who will accomplish this. I love the way Chris Tomlin translates that because he speaks of Yahweh, the God of angel army. That's who will accomplish this. So we close this section of Isaiah down. And we sing about Ahas, the faithless king. We hear about how the leaders of God's people failed them. And they failed them by making the wrong choices. And the citizens of the kingdom failed because they followed them. But God's got another plan. And he's announcing that other plan through the mouth of Isaiah, his prophet. And that plan is he's sending a prince of peace, a prince of peace. And what's even more amazing about it is the word for prince in that passage is actually an Assyrian own word. And what's happening right here in this passage is Yahweh is saying, I got something completely different offered you. Will you not enjoy it? Will you not believe?
Even in Isaiah, I'm going to offer you something completely different. And that was Jesus. And that's what God offered. And yet it wasn't what they expected. It wasn't what they wanted. So by and large, in Jesus' day, he was rejected by his own people.
I am sending you a prince of peace.
Did anybody catch what the answer to Isaiah nine, two, seven, dash, seven, the child God is sending a?
Prince of peace.
You got that?
Yeah.
She said it enough, didn't she?
Similar to Jerusalem, a couple of weeks ago. When Jesus entered.
Oh, I was thinking current days.
Hosanna, blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord. And then five days later. Did everybody get answers to all the questions?
Something. First page.
First page at the top.
Down, down the middle, create a level of what?
Create a level of economic oppression that left their opponents unable to rebel in the future.
Okay, opponents unable to rebel in the future. And then next, take whole populations and paralyze them.
Exile.
Exile, where did I get paralyze? Exile. Well, God had a better plan, didn't he?
Yep, and God has a better plan for us. But sometimes we decide we can be King Ahas and go off on our own and end up making wrong choices. And then we make more wrong choices after the first wrong choices. And before you know it, we've, we're kind of, we've exiled ourselves from God.
Okay, the Assyrians in Israel's experience, we cannot.
Understand Isaiah's world without interacting with these three military events.
So do you think Ahas did not join them because he didn't trust them?
I don't think he trusted them. And if he didn't trust them, you have to say that he didn't trust God either, that God would deliver them as.
And he didn't, he did not talk to God and get advice.
He did not. He rejected God's, the person God set to talk to him.
So what happens to Ahas? They could have killed him, but didn't say they did.
Well, he doesn't actually, let's see. I mean, there, there's a good king after Ahas. Japhom is right after Ahas, even though he's not on that timeline. And then Hezekiah is a pretty good king. And then Manasseh, not so much. But Hezekiah, by and large, followed the ways that God wanted him to. And there was kind of a revival at that point. But he didn't completely remove all the idolatrous signs from the high places. So he left some of the things that his people could stumble over. So I think we'll probably learn a little bit more about him in the coming, coming days.
He was over Judea.
Yes.
So we don't hear about idolatry.
Well, there is some idolatry that goes on in the southern kingdom.
In the southern?
Because they left some of the Asherah poles in the high places. Even Hezekiah, who was thought to have been a, one of the better kings in the southern kingdom, didn't completely remove those idolaters signs.
In Judah?
In Judah. All right, so does anybody? I'm going to count that as pretty much camp covering our first lesson, which starts on page fifty-five. And that's titled, The Promise of Prince of Peace. And then, or actually, I'm sorry. It's Ahas's misplaced trust is lesson one on page fifty-two.
Fifty-two?
Yeah. And then day two, The Promise of Prince of Peace. And we were supposed to read Isaiah nine. Anybody remember anything from Isaiah nine that you may have heard at another time?
And the foreign trusted child is born and trusted son is given, open up portion.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
So Isaiah nine is one of those that we also talk about it, especially at a certain time of year. Talking about Emmanuel, God with us, God being born.
Christmas.
And Isaiah talks a lot about. We'll look at, if I can make my. This is the sign of Emmanuel, starting at Isaiah ten. And she read part of this. Again, the Lord spoke Ahas. Ask a sign of the Lord, your God. Let it be deep as chio or high as heaven. But Ahas said, I will not ask and I will not put the Lord to the test. And he said, Hear then, O house of David. Is it too little for you to, to worry men that you worry, my God, also? Therefore, the Lord himself will give you a sign. Behold, the virgins shall conceive and bear a son and shall call his name Emmanuel. He shall eat curds and honey when he knows how to refuse the evil and choose good. Or before the boy knows how to refuse the evil and choose the good, the land whose two kings you dread will be deserted. I think it's Isaiah six where those other ones come from. That we were talking about.
Chapter is?
This is nine. Does anyone have anything they would like to discuss from our day two study? Or day three? Day three is entitled Messiah.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Notwithstanding that we're only halfway through the study, it's going to take a lot of convincing to convince me the, the narrative we find in chapter nine, verse seven, of the increase of his government and peace, there will be no end. And after having seen the decline of Christendom in the old country and in America. You know, everything happened that she said would happen. She got that right. But looking ahead to the future. But looking ahead to the future. Not so sure of this wonderful. Everlasting peace. Especially when I read the news today. I got a problem. But it's only been two thousand years.
Well, and. Yes, a child has been born to us, a son has been given to us. But would we say that the government is resting on his shoulders yet?
That's getting close to where I'm questioning.
So perhaps we're talking about a different time when portions of this will be fulfilled.
That's what I wonder, maybe it's not here.
Maybe it's.
Maybe it's not here on earth, we may not get to that place.
Spiritual thing.
Could be a spiritual thing.
I don't want to abandon that idea, so I'll take that into consideration.
You know, it would be nice if this were all possible. On this earth, but I'm not sure with the way.
Well, I would say that it could point eternal father, prince of peace, eternal father. That it could point to. The second coming as much as it points to, or even more so, some of it. It points to Jesus in his first incarnation.
Which may be another two thousand years or two days.
Who knows how, yeah.
Or two minutes. But I would think that we, we could probably. Make a case that he, he talked about my peace I give to you. And I think that certainly points in this life to a spiritual peace that. If we abide with him. It doesn't mean that we won't have pain and discomfort, but. From a spiritual standpoint, we will have peace because we know whose we are.
There are the heresy in the beginning where things were allegorized and spiritualized. And. Far removed from the world we live in and experience, so I'm cautious about. But maybe. Maybe not.
But. I mean, at the end, eternal father still got time, eternity lasts a long time.
Is the world better off than it was?
Yes. Cause we have a path to salvation.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's, I only hope we have. As far as this world is concerned, it is just being decimated.
Well, I, I think that it's just going to get worse.
I'm sorry to have to believe that, but.
I, I mean, we pray for peace in Israel. Yes, that, that's a wonderful goal. But. It hasn't happened.
Something's changed. I just read in yesterday's paper, we get it online, talked about Israel release some people. Hundred and fifty Palestinians? I haven't heard that on the news, but I just read.
I heard they couldn't find a hundred and fifty of them. So I, yeah, I. I haven't read the newspaper, I don't.
That's enough to bring peace, oh, to be. That unfortunately is not something that hasn't brought peace in the past when it's happened before, so.
Well, I think Biden's putting some pressure on him.
Well, trying.
Yeah.
But. I don't think Joe can go into the voting booth and vote, and so.
Our former president, president put pressure on. North Korea and China. Maybe Russia.
What'd you say?
We're not any better off than we were. The, the pressure, governments pressuring each other, there's not much salvation in that, I think.
I don't think everybody is going to. I don't see that happening on this earth, that everything comes to pass. Where all the. Warrior's boots used in battle and garments ruled in blood are destined for burning and fuel for the fire, I don't, it's. I don't think it's going to happen on this earth, that's, but that's a hope we have, there's something better. Because I don't think there's going to be, since we have free will on this earth, I don't think there'll be a time when everybody. Accepts Christ and.
Well, we know that every knee will bow, but unfortunately. Whenever he need will bow, some of those people finally recognize who Jesus is, but still don't place their allegiance in him. So I agree that it's not going to happen to, on this earth, maybe on a new heaven or a new earth, but.
You mean, start over?
That's what scripture tells us, of a new heaven and a new earth. Where Jesus will reign.
In the meantime. The way I kind of console myself is. This idea of remnant theology of the remnant. The whole world's going to hell, but if I got my Jesus, I got my peace and my salvation, and I got a few friends, like-minded friends. That's about the best we've been able to do. Hope and prayed for more. But I look at. The man's inhumanity to man started in the Garden of Eden. Now, out of the Cain and Abel. And it just keeps going. We have new ways to make people miserable.
You know, look, look at the downfall of Solomon and Solomon's son and. And Ahas, and you know, they're all grasping onto power and wealth and. I mean.
Ticking off what happened to Saul and David. And. And our Sunday school teacher, over and over he keeps saying, well, it's, it's not really how you live, it's how you end. You want to end right.
Right, well, yeah. They started out good and.
Yeah, that seems to be a pattern.
Well, and I, I think that is also a lesson to us in all of this is. That you have to stand true to the end, fight the good fight, run the good race. And not try to get into the car halfway along the marathon and ride to the end and get out real tired. Can't fake it.
But a thousand years, two thousand years, two thousand years from now is but a day to the Lord. Uh, it, it seems, and it is, it's a long time since Jesus came. Till now, and it's going to be another long time as things continue as they are. But to God, it's just a blink of an eye, oh, this math major, I love it. And that's consolation. It, it is to me.
Isaiah says to Ahas, ask me for a sign. I will prove it to you, I will crush your enemies. Ask anything you like in heaven or on earth, but the king refused, I'm not bother the Lord with anything like that.
That's all that religious stuff.
Given up?
Yep, he's done.
He doesn't know which way to go.
Because he put his faith in.
I'll be your slave.
Yeah.
Forever, just don't hurt me.
He wants out, in other words.
Easy way out for him, in his mind.
Then says, alright then, the Lord said, for the Lord himself would choose the sign, a child will be born to a virgin. It sounds hopeless, and he gives him a sign.
And, I mean, a lot of times that's hope for a family, isn't it? A child born.
Yeah. New beginnings.
New beginning. A hope and a promise that no matter what happens to us, life goes on.
So you can't follow the old man, but we'll start over.
When that conversation was going on. Did Ahas. Understand that, that was going to happen soon.
Are you shaking in his boots? He was scared, like she said, scared silly.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, I think he understood because. I mean, the prophecy was that before this child, that the child is being born now, and before this child is. You know, past ten or twelve years old, your enemies are going to be gone.
Yeah.
Rest of his life in slavery. Are wait ten, twelve years. And, and it was going to be over.
And if God is doing this, you know, he's got to think that, well, God will probably provide for me during these ten to twelve years.
And not him.
Well, and that's some, if God could do what he did. When Jesus was born. What can he not do to get us out of this mess today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so, and you know, on the one hand, we could say that God has already provided the salvation, or this, the solution to the problem. But it's in his time and not in our own, so. I mean.
Where to execute it. Here's the plan.
Oh, yeah.
Go ye therefore.
Right, into all the world, preaching and teaching and baptizing in the name of. Go ye into Jerusalem and Judea and Samaria.
And the other most parts of the world.
And so, no matter how bad we think the world is. We are supposed to make the best of his kingdom now. Including all those things necessary to help his kingdom grow and prosper. So that more people will end up knowing the eternal father. And if we didn't take action. Do.
I was thinking today. This day, to me, there's more discord in the world than I've ever seen. The rallies in our country, death to America, death to Israel. Wars. Countries going after each other, people going after each other.
No value in human life, value placed on human life. Yep, it's easy to become disillusioned. If our hope was in this world, we probably have good reason to be disillusioned.
Well, when you say no, no value in human life, I, I think I'm right in saying this. But if you. Research the number one cause of death. It would be abortion worldwide. But it's, it's never announced like that, it's cardiac arrest or. Something else.
Because that's a.
It's, it's more palpable.
The people who perform abortions don't think that they're taking a human life. They use words that make them more comfortable, they call fetus.
For something that's God given is taken. Yeah.
I think we'll call it quits there on that happy note.
Let's read this out of John thirty-three, says, I have told you these things, this is Jesus talking, so that in me you may have peace. In this world, you will have trouble, but take heart, I have overcome the world.
That's a good addiction.
Yeah.
Positive thought.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of who we believe, the bad story or the good one? John fourteen, did you say?
I'll have to look it up again, I'm sure, but remembering the references. John sixteen.
John sixteen.
Verse thirty-three.
Thirty-four?
Thirty-three. I'll announce this one more time. Cause it kind of says, I mean, he's telling the disciples that, but I think it's true today, in, in this world, that's. That's the way things go. Alright, I'm almost there. These pages are so thin. John, chapter sixteen, verse thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Yes.
Alright. Was that thirty-two?
Like, that's the real world that we live in.
Yes, it is, that's the reality of it.
It is.
Translates over to our time as much as in.
You know, we enjoy our time in situations like this, but recognize that this is not where we're really called to serve.
He gives us peace, but not as the world, because that could be a momentary thing.
Yeah.
Well, and.
There are moments of peacefulness in places and then you're not.
I like to use the example of the year the Colts won the Super Bowl, how, anybody remember how that game started?
Yeah.
Cause he remembers details of games a lot.
Well, they started out on the first play, they ran the kickoff back, the other team ran the kickoff back for a touchdown. And so you think, oh, this is how this game is going to be. But yet, with a little patience. You know, just sixty minutes of patience playing time, five or six hours by the clock movement, but. And so that's the way the world's peace, the world's happiness is parceled out, you know. Whereas God's joy transcends the bad times. Cause it's based on something eternal. Alright, let's close in prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, I thank you for this time together. I thank you for the many blessings that you pour into our lives. Lord, I thank you for this time together, and that all you have done and all you will continue to do to us. And through us and for us. Lord, I pray that you will continue to work to transform our minds. And that you will continue to renew us daily. And when we feel disillusioned because of the state of the world, we remember. How your peace is, not the peace of this world, but your peace. Your peace that gives us the power to transcend our worldly situations and to continue to remain true to you. So Lord, as we go forth, I'd ask that you would continue to surround us with your Holy Spirit. That we would continue to seek the words of your spirit. That we would continue to seek the words of your spirit and not the false and temporal and teasing and titillating words that we hear from our culture. Lord, give us the courage to stand true with you in all things, we pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Just before she read that scripture.